Yeah, open the Board of Selectmen meeting Monday, April 29th, 2024 at 7:00 PM. It's now with Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance. First up is the approval of warrants. We have a motion to approve warrant WR 24-22.
I move we approve WR 24-22.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, next we have minutes.
These are for session on Thursday. Monday whichever it takes.
Everybody read?
Yes.
This is for executive session minutes.
Yes.
April 25th, 2024. It's okay to me.
I move we accept executive session minutes April 25th, 2024 not to be released.
Second.
Motion seconded not to be released at this time. Favor?
Aye.
Aye. Public session, anyone here for public session? That wants to speak, public session.
Recognize, thank you. On April 16th, the planning board members voted to pass a motion to no longer provide remote access to their monthly open meetings. The planning board also passed a motion to no longer report their monthly meetings. This was done because two planning board members have discussed and or threatened to resign from the planning board if remote access is offered and if the meetings are recorded. I'd like to read an email that I received. For this is the email.
Come up here so I can hear.
Hi Barbara, attached are copies of the.
Could you, could you come up? It's a little hard to hear you back there.
Want me to start again or?
No, go ahead, just continue.
Hi Barbara, attached are copies of the April 16th agenda draft meeting notes and motion prepared by Peter Clifford for the board to review and vote. Motion carried by unanimous vote of all five members. Attached also is a letter to the selectmen following the vote explaining in detail the basis for board concern. The Attorney General, six, twenty eight, 2023, ruled hybrid meetings to be optional. And uploading recordings to the internet rather than retaining meeting records and control of the town clerk removes personal control of one's image. Example, an individual may be appalled by their driver's license photo, but that image is always under their absolute personal control in a wallet or purse. Personal images released to the internet, whether by individual choice or by a corporate or municipal policy, become available to anyone for any purpose, including misuse. One and possibly two of our board members have discussed leaving the board if meetings are recorded on Zoom and uploaded to the uncontrollable internet. Planning board meetings are always open to the public, live and records of meetings are always available. Hope this answers your request. Please let me know if you need additional material and I invite you to attend the next meeting Tuesday, May 21st. If you'd like to discuss the board concerns in person. Respectfully, Phil Warbass, Chairman. That's the end of the email. Planning board members are elected town officials. They hold a position that by nature of being an elected town official is public and in the public eye. These are elected positions that were voluntarily sought and accepted. Although I understand that being in the public eye, remote access being recorded can take some getting used to. I do understand, I do not understand the vote to deny remote access and recordings because two members are concerned about their image being recorded and available on the town's YouTube channel. There are other options for those concerned planning board members such as sitting off camera. Remote access and transparency mean that residents have multiple ways to participate in town business. Providing remote access and transparency is a chance for town officials to communicate with all OCAM residents. Why limit access and information for all town residents? Because two people oppose being recorded. There has to be a better solution. The planning board voted to opt out of the town's remote access and participation policy. The Board of Selectmen was notified of that in writing on April 17th. I request that the planning board follow the town policy and continue to offer remote access and recordings. And I request that the Board of Selectmen enforce the remote access and participation policy that is currently in effect. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Take it under advisement.
Yeah, this has already gone to legal, so we're going to take it under advisement. Until we hear back from them.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you said.
It's gone to legal already, so we're waiting to hear back from our returning. Anyone else for public? New library director. You're up.
Introduce yourself. Should I just introduce myself? I'm Lauren Constantine, I'm the new library director over at Folks Memorial Library. I'm excited to be here. I don't have anything else to say. I uh. Worked before. I've worked there before, yeah. I worked there about five years ago for a couple of years under Sam and I was her interim director when she was off on a leave. So I'm familiar with the town and the library and some faces I recognize. Yeah, I'm excited to be here and hope to keep the library as awesome as it is.
Very good, thank you. Welcome.
I'm Susan Meyer. Just here on behalf of the library trustees to say I was going to introduce Lauren, but she did just a fine job herself. One of the main concerns as trustees as we were hiring was that people were coming to us saying they, they didn't want any change. So Lauren for us represented the smoothest possible transition and hopefully no one will even notice that you know, there's been such a huge change.
Big shoes to fill.
Yeah. I know. Working on it.
Okay. All right. The next item is the library well. Do you know anything about that yet?
I do. As far as I, I know it's, we're all pre hooked up. Library has water. We're waiting to hear on the library, the test, the water test.
That's quality.
Yeah, they said to give it a meet, so I think we'll probably get that tested this week.
Okay.
We failed the first one. There was a big chloroform flush, so they said let it settle. I don't know.
Do it again.
And so there was a lot of question about how damaged the pipes were because of all the road salt in our, in our well. So that's where we are now. We're investigating both the water in the well as well as the infrastructure in the, in the building. And, but right now we're getting four gallons a minute and it's crystal clear and it's the clearest water we've ever had by far.
Okay. Does it have anything?
Are you aware of the complaint from the neighbor about the property?
Yes, we had spoken previously with Jack Hendra about reseating and cleaning up the mess, but obviously we couldn't do it until we knew for sure that we were not going to need to open it up again. So last week I asked him to come and, you know, and obviously we're going to clean up our mess. They went down to 500 feet. They fortunately did not have to hydro frack, but there's a huge amount of place, so it, it is a big mess.
It's about a three inch indentation where the truck drove through the corner of his property.
Oh, okay.
But it just needs fill.
Yeah, it's, and we certainly intend, he, he said to us that he would do it himself, but you know, it's our mess and we certainly plan to clean it up.
We know what the total cost of that repair is yet?
I got the. I, I heard of a bill that was shockingly large.
Twenty four thousand nine hundred and something.
Twenty four thousand?
Almost twenty five. It's twenty four, nine, change.
Oh, I didn't hear the nine.
I think, I can go get it if you want me to, just to be sure. Yeah, say twenty five, go up to twenty five.
We get allocated.
Six.
Rough. We would allocate the six out of ARPA for emergency repairs over there, so I would suggest we do the same for the balance. Any discussion? No. Take a motion.
I would move that we find out of ARPA the total cost of the invoice submitted, which was approximately twenty five thousand. For the well.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. You've all been extremely supportive and helpful through this mess. And maybe the end is in sight here.
Hopefully.
Yeah.
Interim town clerk.
Down by the door.
Edna?
Oh, I didn't hear you.
You're up.
I'm old and hard of hearing. According to the law, we have to have two people sign for the early voting, to have early voting and the early voting. And so Tammy and I both signed it because we're constables and registrars. So I don't know if you have to vote on it or just sign, say it's okay or what.
They're recommendations.
All the same, I just thought if everybody wanted a copy.
I would move that we accept registrar's recommendation according to chapter fifty four, section two fifty eight to hold early voting for a town election. The following registers are requesting that the select board to authorize in person early voting on Saturday, May 11th, 2024 from noon to 4:00 PM for the town election.
Second.
Aiden seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Fine.
I have another thing too. I have the warrant ready. I know you're not meeting next week, right? I was hoping you would agree to do it tonight because because it's got to be done.
The constable for one year, that's because you didn't.
Yeah, we had a vacancy.
Okay. And they're just going to complete that person's term?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. That looks okay.
They're just copies I gave.
Oh, okay.
She went to post and.
Okay, yeah, okay. We have a motion to approve the warrant for our election, Monday, May 20th, 2024 from 10:00 AM to 8:00 PM.
I'll make a motion that the town election be held on May 20th, 2024 from 10:00 AM to 8:00 PM. In order to cast your votes in the annual town election for the candidates of the following offices. Selectmen three years, assessor three years, board of health three years, town clerk three years, library trustee three years, cemetery commission three years, school committee three years, constable one year, planning board five years, tree warden three years.
And the question?
The question, shall the town vote to have its elected town clerk become an appointed town clerk of the town?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Can we all just sign one and her, she makes a copy?
Yeah, it doesn't matter.
Or do they all have to be original?
I don't think they have to be original, just the same one that I stay, yeah. Once it's posted online, it'd be fine.
What color are you using?
Blue.
Thank you.
This looks blue too.
This is the same pen.
Doesn't it look crazy?
I'm colorblind, so.
Hey, thank you very much. Alright, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Edna. Next up, chapter ninety project requests. Kevin?
Colbrook Road and Berry Plains Road.
We're on Colbrook.
Center of town, center of town to be on the school.
At a meeting I was at on Saturday of rural towns that are not getting properly reimbursed for state land. It was suggested that we stop maintaining the roads that are serving state lands until they actually reimburse us fairly. But that road is, that portion of it is already in good shape.
Years ago, we sent letters to the MDC when we did Colbrook Road and they would not fund any, any funds towards paving that road. Still a town road, so whether it's all state properties, they'll have to maintain them.
Berry Plains Road is a hundred and five thousand dollars.
Colbrook.
And Colbrook Road is a hundred twenty seven thousand two hundred thirty five. Motion to approve.
I would move we accept the chapter ninety proposals.
For Berry Plains Road and for Colbrook Road? For the amount syndicated? Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Kevin, do you know if the rural aid money that we got has been deposited yet?
No, it's, it's, I don't believe, I don't know how.
They said they did two weeks ago.
We do the work and then we put in the reimbursement and the treasurer usually takes care of that bill.
And so we haven't heard from the treasurer yet that she's received it, but apparently they deposited it two weeks ago.
You can, you want to sign it?
Of course.
Or do we all have to?
I think.
Each signature is on the person's second page.
There's three of them.
Yeah, there's two copies.
Did they have to be all of them? Okay, that's my point.
Right on top left corner.
Sorry. I think that's the only page for the Oliver's design.
Next up is the Eagle Scout recognition letter.
So OCAM has a troop in town that's had, been here for I think three or four years and recently a OCAM resident was awarded Eagle. And so I have a proclamation to, for us to sign and present at his border, at his court of honor, which is coming up on the 24th, I believe. Town of OCAM proclamation, whereas achieving the rank of Eagle Scout is a significant accomplishment that reflects dedication, leadership and service to the community. Whereas Jacob Labarre, a resident of the town of OCAM, has demonstrated exceptional commitment and achievement by attaining the rank of Eagle Scout. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Selectmen of the town of OCAM hereby extends its heartfelt congratulations to Jacob for his outstanding accomplishments and wish him continued success in all its future endeavors, given this 29th day of May, 2024 by the Board of Selectmen of the town of OCAM. So I would move that we sign the proclamation.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And this is going to be presented?
Yeah. May 24th.
May 24th.
May 18th. At 4:00 PM. At the Darius Sportsman Club.
Yeah, next up we have the highway superintendent replacement discussion. We had a meeting last week. We had a discussion at that meeting. I know you guys had offered an option three. Was to readvertise. What we did not do was reject the two candidates we had, we took no vote on these two candidates, so we need to do that. So. Mr. Stanton, we have a motion on the floor to offer the position to Mr. John Stanton. Hearing none. Motion failed. Candidate is rejected. Second candidate is Harold Black. We have a motion on the floor to offer Harold Black the position of highway superintendent. Okay, I'll make a motion that we offer the job to Harold Black.
Second.
Discussion. Any?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, no discussion. We have a second in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, two in favor, one abstention. Congratulations, Harold.
Congrats, Harold. Good speech. I got big shoes to fill, he did a great job.
Yes, you do.
Keep learning.
Yep, yep. He set a high bar, so you're going to have to get there. We'll, we'll be in touch with you to discuss salary and.
Subject to background check.
Yeah, you might have a problem. Next up was the call on Skinner for the superintendent position. We're not going to need that now. Just made the appointment. Kevin, when's your last thing?
Last thing.
Next up there is fiscal year 25 budget. Anybody have any additions? Anybody have any additions? We all saw the email from FinCom, we're twenty-five thousand in the red. Talked to FinCom chairman today. And he has some suggested cuts, but they were pretty much the same ones that I had that I was going to present to you guys tonight. Let me find it. Here we go. First one would, as we had discussed, there's a special coming up in September, so we can backfill from the new free cash with this. But going into the annual town meeting, we need a balanced budget. We should have a balanced budget. So first thing is the increase for street signs is fifty-five hundred dollars. That's the first one we'll reduce. The second one is five thousand from the contracted plow line item. Six thousand from the expense for police training. Four thousand from fire training. Five thousand from ox and rec. That's twenty-five five, so we now have a balanced budget going into the annual. Like I said, all of these be with that again in September when we get the new free cash numbers.
I also had an email from the FinCom asking if I could lower the budget for the historical commission. The historical commission is fifteen hundred dollars. I'm sure we probably could lo- lower it to a thousand. I was hoping to keep some of it just in case we needed it for final touch-ups for the arch. But I think we could do it for a thousand rather than fifteen hundred. The only thing I didn't understand on that budget was that he said it shows that for the past two years, even three years, that we had not spent anything from our budget. I do not understand that because there was one year when we had the historic village declared, we did a booklet of about twenty-five booklets of an individual that could walk through and understand that the, how it was done, the roads, every house that's in the district, what the house looks like and why it's in the district. That cost us at least four to five hundred dollars to do, so I know we took that out of the budget. The next year, we put up the green signs that said, welcome to the historic district of Ocam Village. That cost us another about five hundred dollars for that. I know we didn't, Lee and I did not pay for those ourselves. Those came out of our budget. But I don't understand why the budget isn't showing that. So we're not just giving back money every year. We have been using it.
Okay.
And this year, I thought we might have to use part of it to help put the arch back in place down at Green Hollow Cemetery.
Question. Did you see you're cutting six thousand out of the street signs and line budget?
Fifty-five. Just the increase.
What's the total on that sign item? I don't have my budget with me.
I think you increased it to fifteen thousand.
The reason why I did is because I needed that money to paint all the lines in town. I have six thousand, no, it won't paint all the lines.
This is only until the special.
Okay.
It's not forever. It's just to get into the.
I'm just looking up the guy behind me.
No, I get it. Yeah, it wasn't, you would increase it from ninety-five to fifteen.
Yeah, the street side, the street line painted last night, the last year was twelve thousand dollars.
Right. So.
Those are FinCom's figures or Board of Selectment figures or approval of post?
This is our suggested to the FinCom.
Okay.
They're meeting Wednesday.
Because I think they're going to suggest others than that, than those.
Well, they have some small ones he had mentioned.
My historic commission.
You guys go in Wednesday? No?
If they're meeting, I'll be there.
Okay.
I, I just want to be careful that they're not going to go after the cemetery commission.
I'm saying that.
No, okay. We have a lot of work to do in the cemetery, so we're going to need our budget.
Yeah.
And in the meeting with the state today, it sounded like they think there's more revenue than we currently been saying there is, so.
Yeah, I I can't think of the guy's name.
Theo.
Theo Jared.
Theo, Theo. He had mentioned that we have been way too conservative on our estimates. And we've been coming in higher every year with bourbon himself. It's not a bad thing. But so he may not be twenty-five over, but I thought it was a pretty productive meeting. You know?
I just did want to make a comment on the cemetery commission where we're asking for eleven thousand for having them mowed and weed whacked all around all of the graves. I thought, I still think it's a reasonable price. I looked at Hardwick and they're paying twenty-five thousand. I don't know how many cemeteries Hardwick has, but we have five. In the cemetery, I just was notified that in the abbey that one of the stones has fallen over and they're going to need at least two guys to go in and help put that stone back in place. Brother Richard had called me about that, so.
At the Grange.
At the Grange, yes. I, I believe that's what we call the Boyd Cemetery as usual.
Yeah.
So we, we will repair, we will put that back in place. That is our responsibility, even though they usually take care of it all the time for us.
Anything else on the budget? There's so much on the budget, but anything that we need to the.
This will be the first week in four months that we won't be meeting two weeks in a row or every week.
Right. Now we have to start the, the actual articles, so.
Is that going to be enough time waiting until the thirteenth?
That's what I was going to ask, too. I still think we need to do it until we get everything done and the articles are done. Because we're planning on a very early annual town meeting this year. But we need to make sure everything is in place.
So you want to have a meeting just on the articles on the sixth?
I won't be here.
Can you zoom?
No. I could do Friday.
When, when are you going to be gone?
I leave Saturday and I'm back Friday, the following Friday.
Okay. Can we set up a meeting before you go?
Yeah, I could meet on Friday.
Friday would be all right with me.
Third. Yeah, third.
Yeah.
Yeah, that works for me. So May third. Yeah.
Twelve? Eleven thirty?
Yep.
Lucy said eleven thirty.
No, I can take either. Like I said, I'm always around.
Yeah, I have a meeting that goes until eleven thirty, so.
Okay. Okay, that's fine.
Will that be the only topic on the agenda?
Be the only topic that we'll always have.
Oh, yeah, the new and old business. Yeah, the only line item.
Next up is admin assistant report.
I have nothing.
You have nothing?
Nope.
Any new business for the board?
Yes, I've received notification that Peter Clifford, who is now a member of the planning board, has offered his experience for being a member of the zoning board of appeals. Well, I know we can't vote on it tonight, but I wanted to bring attention so that our next meeting, we could vote him and he would be ready for our June sixth hearing. He won't be ready for our May ninth hearing. But he will be hopefully be able to be on board for June sixth. And we only have three members of our board, but two of them are full board members. One is the alternate. I would suggest that the alternate be replaced. Or go back to being the alternate and Peter would take over the full role. But all the paperwork and everything will have already been done for both of those hearings. I've managed to get both of them done.
Okay.
Is that, would that be a position that needs to be a special town employee as an elected and appointed? And it wouldn't be for Mister Clifford, it would be for both of those
Right.
boards and committees then henceforth forever.
Yep.
And there's a process that has to be done to file with the state.
Right.
Any other new business?
That's all that I had.
Any old business?
Just today. The meetings went well.
Yeah, yeah. Kevin, did you meet with the accountant today, were you able to?
No, I buried my brother today, so I didn't have.
Oh, that's right. That's right. Yeah, sorry. Is there anything you need from her?
No.
No. Any correspondence? Done. All right. Anything else?
I'm all set.
I'm adjourned.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, seven forty-three.